Compliment. We have a compliment of eight board members. So I'm going to call the meeting to order at 7:00 PM. And we are missing Katina Caban Owen. She got in touch with me and she has a family member who is in surgery right now. And she is taking care of the children. So she's not sure she'll be able to break away, but she will try to join us in this meeting. And as the board knows, Dr. Youngberg is being a mother right now. Her son is getting special recognition this evening for his senior in his senior year and as a musician. I can't remember what the instrument is, Neil. I think it's trombone or something like that.
I'm not sure. I feel it's in, I feel it's in the brass section. I could tell you.
Yeah, I think it's a brass instrument. At any rate, she will text me when she's done with that and let me know whether she'll be able to join us for any of this evening's meeting. She sends her regrets, but she has an able partner in Neil Weathers, who will be sitting in in that role this evening for us as the second in in line as the assistant superintendent. So welcome, everybody. And the first order of business is public comment. So anybody who would like to speak during public comment, if you would like to either just unmute yourself or put your name into the chat. Okay, seeing none. We will then just go right into the business of tonight's meeting. And we have a bunch of minutes to approve for three special meetings and one regular meeting. So I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes for the May 26, 2020, 21 special meeting of the Board of Education.
So moved second.
Moved by, I heard Mark first and then Ilda did the second. Is there any discussion on those minutes? Okay, we'll take a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Doyle.
Yes.
Dr. Galucci.
Hi.
Dr. Gomez.
I'm gonna have to abstain for one of those meetings that I was not present. So I don't know how do we go about this. Last week, I missed a special meeting for the second, June 2nd. So I go.
This is for May 26, though, Jaime. There were.
Oh, it's one at a time? Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Hi, sorry.
Ms. Haney.
Paula.
Hi.
Ms. Ide.
Hi.
Ms. Lambert.
I have to abstain.
Mr. O'Neill.
Hi.
Ms. Ray.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Then we have the regular board meeting of May 26. I would entertain a motion to adopt those minutes.
So moved.
So moved by Brendan. Do I get a second? Ilda, okay, thank you, Ilda. Any discussion? Okay, we'll take a roll call vote then, please.
Mr. Doyle. Yes.
Yes.
He said yes.
Dr. Galucci.
Hi.
Dr. Gomez.
Hi.
Ms. Haney.
Hi.
Ms. Ide.
Hi.
Ms. Lambert.
Hi.
Mr. O'Neill.
Hi.
Ms. Ray.
Yes.
Thank you.
You, and now we're on to the following day, May 27. We had another special meeting of the Board of Ed. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved Tracy.
Tracy. Second by Mark. Any discussion? Okay, we'll take a roll call vote. Janet, please.
Mr. Doyle.
Hi.
Dr. Galucci.
Hi.
Dr. Gomez.
Hi.
Ms. Haney.
Hi.
Ms. Ide.
Hi.
Ms. Lambert.
Hi.
Mr. O'Neill.
Hi.
Ms. Ray.
Hi.
Thank you.
Okay, and then finally, this is the one you missed, Jaime, was the June special meeting of the Board of Ed. I entertain a motion on that.
So moved Tracy.
Tracy Lambert.
Second.
Second by Brendan. Any just, any discussion or changes? Okay, we'll take a roll call vote on this one then. Thanks.
Mr. Doyle.
Yes.
Dr. Galucci.
Hi.
Abstention by Dr. Gomez.
Abstain.
Ms. Haney.
Hi.
Ms. Ide.
Hi.
Ms. Lambert.
Hi.
Mr. O'Neill.
Hi.
Ms. Ray.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. So now we're going to hand it over to Neil Weathers for the the reports.
Okay, can, let's see here.
We can see it.
All right. Okay, so welcome and good evening, everybody. And I am also happy for our superintendent who's getting to enjoy some mom time celebrating her son. So let's start here with our celebrations. And we have plenty this week. So first, I'd like to offer congratulations on behalf of the district to all 29 students recognized at the Wyndham High School Scholarship Award Ceremony, which took place this Monday. Actually, I was there for the beginning part of it. I know we had a couple of our board members there. That's an awesome event and just want to recognize the high school seniors that received recognition and scholarships. We also have the Wyndham.
Neil, you need to move through the slideshow. We're just looking at the, if you have slides you want to show us.
Yeah, am I, am I pulling where you just see the beginning?
Yeah, so now you have to click on, yeah, there you go.
All right, that was the, that was the first thing I told you about. There's the beautiful high school seniors in celebration. And then now we're on to the next one. Sorry about that.
It's okay.
So Wyndham, we have the Wyndham High School Early College, College Opportunity Program, our ECHO student, Joel Sotelo Flores, Guadalupe Marilla Garcia, and Junior Paul LaChapelle received first place at the East Coast Regional Space Settlement Design Competitions. So congratulations to all three of those students. Good job. In addition to our high school awards, we actually had the middle school grade eight outstanding award ceremony. They did that virtually this past week, last week. And you could see here, too, the students being recognized in their virtual ceremony. They had many students in grade eight that were honored. So congratulations to all our Wyndham Middle School students. We had 12 of our CH Barrows STEM Academy Bulldogs receive awards from the Connecticut Invention Convention. We had Liliana Isquero, JD in Charrington, Noah Cravat and Hannah Cravat are continuing on to the national competition. So kudos to all of our competitors and good luck to our four national competitors. Our before and after school program received donation for athletic surprise. This is from our past employee and ECSU student Cory Callahan. So thank you Cory for your generous contribution. Wyndham High School had its 10th Annual Lock-in for Literacy and Culture. They held this virtually and obviously this is a great event and they did it successfully. You can see in the picture there, the Zoom in effect doing their literacy locking. So congratulations to them. This next event held by our before and after school program. Currently, the program is working to offer first aid and CPR training to over 15 parents and guardians. I think this is an incredible training that they're giving to our families. I think this is, first aid and CPR is a wonderful skill and I'm glad this is happening. It happened this past weekend. You can see right there in the high school cafeteria. A shout out to Wyndham High School's prom. Under the Stars is the theme and they had a well deserved outdoor festivity for students. Can see the happy faces there. It's wonderful that we were able to do that this year. So congratulations to the high school and their students for being able to enjoy that. And then along that, we had, want to celebrate our volunteers who organized the Whippet Boutique. It's a beautiful display of dresses and suits and outfits donated by staff and community members. So each of our students had access to beautiful free formal wear for the prom. And that just is awesome that that occurs and speaks to the spirit of our school community and our larger community. And then finally, in our district celebrations, we have Nicole Bay, the STEM coach at CH Barrows STEM Academy. She received an official certification on the Jason Coaches Badge. Jason Learning is a science program, science coursework. And Nicole Bay is a science expert for, you know, Barrows and has helped us in the district. So kudos to her for this recognition. Way to go Nicole. And I believe that ends the district celebrations.
Are there any questions or comments that anybody on the board has about any of that? Other than, like, that's an amazing amount of good news, lovely news. And the kids are lucky, the seniors are lucky this year that they can do some of those normal end of year things. Anybody want to say anything? Okay. Thank you. So now we have a grant opportunity on the agenda. I'll let you just keep running through now and people will ask.
Okay, so I, thank you. So the next thing on the agenda is the grant opportunity for Eastern Connecticut Association of Realtors. They basically have, have this grant where schools in the Wyndham School District could request supplies for their classroom. At this time, North Wyndham Schools made a request for what they would like for their school. And we just, we'll keep you updated how this goes. And we just wanted to thank Coach James Thompson at Wyndham High School for making the district aware of this valuable opportunity. So thank you, Coach Thompson.
Wonderful.
Any questions? Okay, moving on. Our next thing is talking about the update on moving out of the Kramer Building. So currently, the bottom line is we're estimating that everything we need to turn over to the town and any materials that we have still in the Kramer Building will occur by approximately mid-September. Right now, we have, we've been looking at some contracts of people to make sure we get everything needed out. We're also following all the regulations and rules to get things out and make sure that things could be offered for sale or donation or items that are just determined that require disposal. There's procedures and protocols for all of that. We have Willamantic Waste Paper Company has been contracted to provide dumpsters. They arrived on Tuesday. There's many records and other items as well that have to be designated for shredding to be done properly. And WB Meyer has been contracted to perform that fun task on site. And they're going to begin on June 14. It's going to take them, we believe, 10 to 12 days to complete this. And they're also contracted to provide a crew to physically empty the contents of the building. And that will also start next Monday. So that is the current update with, with that procedure.
Are there any questions about that? I know, I don't know about any of the board members, but some people have asked me about what's being done with the materials that are moving out. Are we keeping any of them? Are they being donated places? Or do you know anything about that, Neil?
So basically, what we've been doing is if there's a procedure, if something's determined to be disposed of, we get rid of it through the dumpsters. If, but there's a whole litany of protocols, like there where we have to make the town, like we bring it to the town's attention in case that we want to offer it for sale or donation. So there's like a whole protocol that goes through where we coordinate with the town for each item. And there's, there's, you know, Kramer's a big building that's been there a while. So there's plenty of things there. I see people nodding their heads and with different levels of smiling, not smiling. But the task is going according to plan. All the work and effort being done for it, we're very appreciative of. The contracts are set up. We feel, we feel fairly confident that like we're on track to get, you know, finally be moved out of Kramer. I must want to say that in quotes, but.
Mark, do you have your hand up?
Yes, if I did, can you hear me?
Yep.
Yes.
I had to switch. Talk me through the budget, Neil. Is this all being taken care of in this year's budget? Are we spreading it over?
I'm going to quickly, I see Rita getting on. Thank you Rita to answer that.
As much as we can is being funded out of this year's budget. But some will, will obviously have to be next year's budget because the services won't be rendered until the end of, you know, through September. But we have already contracted with a lot of the contracts to take, to use some of the surplus out of this year's. And you'll see the transfers next week for that purpose.
And they assume we exhausted all of the money this town gave us a couple of years back?
Yes. The capital money.
To that, yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you Rita.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you. I don't envy you all having to work on that. That's an undertaking, but.
Yes, and kudos to all the staff that is working on that. It is an undertaking, but kudos to everyone that's doing a good job. That is a very complex task. It may not seem that complex, but it is. So the next item on the agenda is to discuss the diversity, equity, inclusion policy. I know this might get mentioned later in the committee reports, but we're presenting it here as for our first reading tonight. And one thing I just wanted to share, I know that Katina and Ilda, Board Member Ray and Board Member Caban Owen, both served on the Diversity Equity Inclusion Committee along with many teachers and staff members from multiple buildings across the district. There were several central office people that served. Dr. Medambi actually led that work. And so as a result of all year putting together this equity policy, diversity, equity, inclusion policy is being presented to you tonight. But it, it was a year long process of meeting monthly, a lot of good conversation. So.
Does anybody have any comments or questions on what was shared with us? It's a really important document for us and for the district. So kudos to those who worked on it. And I encourage any board members who have any questions or concerns, if they don't bring them up tonight, to certainly bring them up with the central office and or the policy committee members through Ilda before June 23.
Yeah, it was a great committee to serve on and a lot of awesome staff members from, like I said, all the buildings are represented.
Okay, we're zooming right along here. We've been, in our packets was a pretty comprehensive outline of the communications plan for the, the next phase of the American Rescue Plan proposal. And Neil, would you like to, to give us an overview, especially for members of the public who are watching this or following this? I think it's important because it really does require that there to be stakeholder input in how we utilize these funds within the parameters of how they can be utilized.
Yes, so, thank you. So as you, so everyone knows, we're scheduled to receive, you know, substantial funds over the next three years from this S R two as well as the American Rescue Plan. So our S R two application for everybody, just to know, was submitted on time and was already approved by the Connecticut State Department of Education. So the district, like all the other districts across the state are now in the process of completing the tasks required to get the S R funds. Their requirements, just so everybody knows, includes a formal, safe return to in-person instruction plan and the ability, and this is what Ms. Ide was talking about, to solicit meaningful public input and stakeholder engagement about the plan. So it's very important that we do that and get thoughts from, you know, our very stakeholders in the Wyndham community. At the June 23 board meeting, Dr. Youngberg's going to expand on this summary and make sure the public's well informed and engaged in the process. Included for the board members is a timeline. So by Friday, an anonymous survey is going to be opened up so people could begin to offer their feedback. Communication will be provided in English and Spanish whenever possible, which obviously in our district is a important to us to do. And we will, and then from there, we will take next steps. And at the 23rd board meeting, June 23, Dr. Youngberg will go into greater detail in some of these timelines, steps, unless anyone has any questions about any of them now.
Anybody have any questions? I encourage folks, if they have ideas or thoughts that would, would add to, you know, meet that meaningful public input, to share them with the superintendent. So that when she comes to us on the 23rd, if you have some ideas that might be worth considering, I think that would be hopeful to hear from board members on that. I've heard some pretty scary stories of other districts where that isn't happening. So I really want to encourage our, our, our teachers and our staff and our board members to weigh in on this. Any thoughts on this? Tracy?
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you. I thought you were.
No, no, it's fine.
Um, it's hard to tell when we're not in person like this, but I just want to remind everybody that these grant funds always come with strings. People think that there's just a ton of money out there and we can do whatever we want with it. And there are limitations and strings that come with almost all the grants, if not all the grants that we receive. And so we have to be careful how we spend them. It's not just money we can throw at any pet project or any, you know, activity coming up that we want to. And so sometimes people don't realize that, that it has a purpose and our hands are tied on what we can spend it on sometimes.
Good point. And to that point, are we making sure when we send the survey out that there's some bullet points on what the parameters of the program are?
So I, when I talk to Dr. Youngberg, we'll make sure that the survey in some way conveys that. One thing that we've done as we plan this out, for example, with some of the earlier grants that have already been approved, they usually guide you like the four, like four bucket, major buckets. And we try to, in our conversation, guide around those. So we'll sort of set up the survey around that so that when people are entering, that it's not things that are not, you know, like, like Ms. Lambert just said, they are not realistic within the grant parameters. So we'll, we'll try to convey that the best we can in a, in a survey. That's an excellent point.
I wasn't trying to undermine you, Mr. Weathers. I just wanted to make sure that people understood that it doesn't just like get doled out to the first come, first served. There are certain ways we have to spend it.
There's protocols, absolutely. Thank you.
The first time I approved a grant, I was like, oh, we have all this money for. And then I found out that, no, there are strings attached to it. So thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, I, you know, the, what I was referring to is some of the, the stories I've been hearing from other districts about, well, the mayor has a great idea about how this money that the school district is getting should be spent and wants to try to push that through. And, you know, it, you know, we have to be careful about it. We want to do it. I, I have no doubt the central office wants to do everything absolutely by the book. That is the way you all operate. And, but we just need to make sure that we make sure that the public out there understands what's going on with this.
Thank you. By the book is Rita Parsiac's middle name, by the way.
BTB, Rita BTB Parsiac, okay.
So, but thank you. I, I believe that is the end of the superintendent's report.
Okay, I did get a text from Dr. Youngberg that she will be joining us in probably 15, oh, maybe 10 minutes even. So, so she will be around when we get to the action items, at least the one that, that impacts her directly. So here we are on committee reports. I know some committees haven't met and there won't be something to report. But anything you want to share with us? Mark for Finance and Audit.
As you said, we haven't met since the last board meeting. We will meet next Wednesday, continue to review the end of the year plans and start looking at the, some of the uses of these. Start looking at some of the use of these grant monies as we, as we talked about as well. But we'll be next Wednesday.
Yeah, and there is a lot to deal with at the end of the year. So I know Rita and her team have been working really hard on that. And if you want to hear more, come to that meeting next Wednesday. Thanks, Mark. School Planning and Design Committee, Tracy.
We had a meeting last Thursday, there we go, and discussed some of the things going on in the district. They have filed the applications for the school roof replacement and the underground storage tank reimbursement. They are addressing the fact that there are apparently no air conditioners in any of the nurses' offices in any of the buildings. So when with kids come in sick, they have nowhere cool to go to cool off. So that's something we're addressing now. They are going out to bid for our elevator or they've gone out to bid for our elevator maintenance and repair contract. And it has gone from about $12,000 a year down to about $4,800 with the winning bid. We've gone from a comprehensive, which wasn't as comprehensive as we might have hoped, to a need based only, basically, contract. And so that has been the big difference in that right there. We are working for the summer on water to the portables for Wyndham Center, replacing the electric vehicle charger outside the high school because one of the coils is broken. And we have an alliance grant for life safety upgrades, which is the main fire panel at several schools and fire alarms and smoke detectors. They're hoping to have that completed by August 30. There's a shed for North Wyndham going in over the summer from Carefree Buildings for equipment and furniture. And the middle school is having the gym floor refinished, I think in Barrows as well. And East Con is paying for air conditioning at W E C C at the middle school. I think that's it in a nutshell. It wasn't too long a meeting. We went over some of the summer projects and stuff like that. So we had them on our radar and briefly discussed what was going on at Kramer. Just, you know, that we're getting out of the building and we hope to have it done by the end of the summer. Any questions? That was a lot I just threw at you, but it was just thumbnails of everything, so.
Mark?
There's a toss up for you, Neil. Kramer obviously has quite a few air conditioning units sitting in the windows. Are we going to be repurposing those for nurses' offices or for other buildings?
I don't think so. I think a lot of those air conditioners are outdated and not energy efficient. I think that purchasing new ones and or reconfiguring some of the stuff that's going on in the buildings is how we're planning on air conditioning the nurse's office. I don't know if Dawn is on this call. I only see half the screen at the time. She may be up until.
Oh, yeah, what Tracy said is, is correct. They're really old units. They're probably all mold inside them. So they're not very efficient and they're pretty disgusting. I wouldn't, I wouldn't want anybody breathing any of that air from them. So that, yeah, and I believe the town took a couple because they did go through the building. They did take a couple that they thought was salvageable. was salvageable. But besides that, you know, they're just, oh, I wouldn't, I wouldn't use them. They're really old and garbage.
Especially with the concerns we have now with COVID and the ventilation, we don't want to put anything in there to compound an issue.
I would guess you'd have, you'd have to have certain filtration in air conditioners that we put in now.
The older ones, yeah.
Yeah, no, no, in the new ones, like.
Oh, absolutely. Yeah.
Like the ones that East Con is doing and.
Providing.
Early childhood. Yeah.
Does that answer your question, Mark? If it's going to cost more in electricity and/or not clean the air, then I don't think it's worth moving. And that was a little bit of the discussion we had, and thank you, Dawn, for backing me up on that.
Are there any other questions for Tracy? I have a question. I have a question. You might, is there something that you, you, you could share or you or Mary could share with the word about the, the update from the state around the approval of the, the.
The letter.
Revision? Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, um, it was shared with us that we received the letter from the State Department of Ed and the Construction Services that we are approved to go out to bid for the projects. We have not actually received the funding. That has to come from the legislature and they still have to vote on that. But the bid has, the bid process, the bid process approval has gone through, so we can start our bidding process on the high school. We just can't sign contracts until the funds have been approved. And so we're moving forward slowly and Dr. Galucci and I, we're not at Monday's meeting and there wasn't a quorum, so it didn't matter, but it did matter. But we were at the high school giving out the scholarship awards and her son Pascal was receiving one. So we were unable to attend the building committee, just like Dr. Youngberg who just joined us. Family has to come first once in a while and, and the kids always come first for me, so I was happy to be at that. But we've approved, approved, received the approval to go out to bid, which means we can start having contractors walk through. And in last week's Chronicle, I want to say it was Thursday, maybe? There was a ad in the Chronicle for the bid process and inviting people to bid on it as we have to publish in several papers. So we're moving forward slowly on that. Picking up speed now. And we're very excited about the letter because that's a huge step forward. It doesn't seem like a letter is a big step, but we've been working on this now since 2017 when the referendum passed. And so finally getting that letter is a huge deal for those of us that have been working on it.
Yeah.
And just let everybody know, we're having a July School Planning and Design Committee meeting, just to kind of review summer stuff. And then August, we're not having one because Dawn and her staff will be just going crazy trying to get the buildings ready, and I don't want to put any more on them. We'll have another one in September.
Thank you. Thank you. Always a lot to report from school building and design. I mean, school planning and design. Thanks. Policy Committee, Ilda, is there anything you'd like to report?
Yes. Hello, everyone. So we did me earlier this month. And, um, so a policy book has been sent to our attorney for an audit of our policies and procedures. And they will update those that are legally mandated by the state of Connecticut for the Board of Ed. Some state statutes have changed and the policies must be updated. They will retire all those which are not legally mandated. The final product will be a policy manual, which will consist of the legally mandated ones and be updated. So that's exciting.
And you will be bringing that to the board? Because we will have to approve those updates, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Anybody have any questions for the policy committee? So glad that's finally getting done. That's.
Is there a cost associated with this, Lynn or Ilda?
Yes, yeah, I asked Dr. Youngberg to to look into with Attorney Ritter what the cost would be because I didn't want it to end up being, oh, we get like a $20,000 bill that we weren't expecting. I was sort of freaked out about that. So, Dr. Youngberg, welcome back. Nice to see you.
Thank you.
I know you have an answer to that question.
You know what? I do, and I'm trying to remember the exact figure. I know it was.
It was $3,500.
Okay, $3,500 and then a $1,000 upkeep annually, correct?
Yes.
Which was very affordable, given what we're already paying for something similar, a service that's similar.
And we, what we decide, what we discussed, Tracy Lambert, was that given the cost of having a lot of staff time spent on that, you know, taking that away from other work that's very important that we still need to be doing in the district on a day-to-day basis that, that that cost of $3,500 seemed like, actually, if you look at the cost benefit of it, seemed like a good thing to do.
I don't doubt that. I know we had an audit at one point before in the past when someone else was chair of the committee and nothing really happened with it. And so I'm glad that we've kind of given it to them to kind of take it over and then all we have to do is approve them. That seems much more reasonable than all the staff it takes to go through one policy every month or something. Sometimes two or three, but you know, it's generally an onerous task.
Yeah. So I know Ilda and Katina and and Paula, I think have been working with Stephanie Garrett. And then when it got to this point, they brought it to us like about a week or so ago and, and Dr. Youngberg and I conferred before we told the attorney to like actually do it because we wanted to make sure we weren't getting in over budget heads. So. Thank you for asking. Good question. I'm just going to shut the door because I have people in the next room talking. There's nothing to report from the executive committee. We haven't had a meeting. Thank you. Nothing new to report. Anything from the Ad hoc Elementary School Consultation Committee?
No, other than we're still scheduling our school visits. We had to kind of take a look at a couple that we thought we might be able to have this week. So we will be looking to reschedule. Well, to schedule, I shouldn't say reschedule meetings at Sweeney, Angela and, um, and at, uh, let's see, that would leave Nat Chalk. So we're going to be working on those. We decided not to have a meeting in June. We'll take a look at whether we'll be meeting in July as we gather more information and then schedule more of a workshop a little bit later on.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay, so now we're on to the action items on the agenda. And at our last meeting, we had the first reading of revisions, revisions to policy number 5141.4, child abuse. Really hard to read through, even just the, the policy itself. So is there any, I'd entertain a motion on this.
So moved.
Moved by Mark.
Again.
Second, second by Paula. Are there any questions or discussion on the revisions as we've been presented and have been asked to approve? Okay, hearing none. We'll take a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Dr. Galucci?
Aye.
Dr. Gomez?
Aye.
Aye. Ms. Hyde?
Aye.
Ms. Lambert?
Aye.
Mr. O'Neill?
Aye.
Ms. Rowe?
Aye.
Thank you.
Now we're on to approval of the superintendent's employment contract. I actually asked our attorney through Janet to get us the actual wording for this motion. I'm going to read it out loud. I'm sorry, I didn't get a chance to send it to you all this afternoon. I had, I was up at the Capitol. It's the last day of the legislative session, so my day was a little crazy. So I'm going to read it out loud and then I'd love somebody to like make the motion and second it, and then we can get into discussion. So moved in accordance with section 10 dash 157 of the Connecticut General Statutes that the board reappoint Dr. Tracy Youngberg as superintendent of schools effective July 1st, 2021 and continuing through June 30th, 2024, subject to the approval of the Commissioner of Education in accordance with section 10 dash 157 of the Connecticut General Statutes and moved further that the board chairperson be authorized to finalize and execute the proposed employment contract with Dr. Youngberg on behalf of the board.
So moved, Tracy Lambert, very happily.
Second by Jaime. Okay, so the motion has been made and seconded. And there are a lot of smiles on the part of the board. This was a really great process with Dr. Youngberg. We wish we had, I wish as the board chair, that I had been on top of it and gotten it done just a little earlier. Because here we are in June, second week of June, and your contract is up at the end of June. But the board is very happy. Had a very constructive conversation with Dr. Youngberg about goals for the coming year and things that we can work on together, the board and Dr. Youngberg on improvements as well as recognition of her, her most laudable contribution to the district since she took, took over in a very difficult circumstance. And so I'd like to open it up to the rest of the board to comment because I'm sure that people have some things that they'd like to say before we vote.
I'll go first. I, I, I'm just looking at all the heads and the smiles. That's very comforting. And I know you must be comforted by that, too, Dr. Youngberg. It was a pleasure to be able to to have that discussion with you last week, a couple weeks ago. I wish, I wish we had done it sooner, but better late than never is my motto. So we look forward to working with you. Thank you. Thank you for enlightening the, the air for us. And bring in harmony back.
Anybody else?
Ellen, I just want to mention, I've worked with a number of superintendents in my career here as a board member, I think five. And I have to say, yes, I'm very pleased with, with Tracy and, and it's been very, very good working with her. And it's always been responsive and I'm very happy to see that we're going to continue the relationship.
Paula?
I I say the same. It's been a pleasure, having been on the Board of Finance and hearing all the scuttlebutt over the last few years. It was wonderful to walk into the Board of Ed and have you as our commander in chief. It's, you've done a wonderful job in so many ways and wish you continued success and look forward to continued relationship. Thank you for all you've done so far.
Anybody else? Tracy?
I want to thank Dr. Youngberg for walking into a difficult situation and not throwing her hands up and running in the other direction. Between COVID and everything else that's gone on, it wasn't an easy task for her to take this all over. And not quite as many as Mark, but I've worked under four superintendents because I'm a little bit younger. And, um, and it's really been, it was joyous to go into that room and have us all with the same goal and all with pretty much the same opinion. You know, there was discussion and stuff, but there was pretty much the same opinion that we're going to renew Dr. Youngberg because we thought she's done a fabulous job. You know, and what do we want to say to her and how do we want to, you know, set up the next year? But there was no anger, there was no animosity, there was no frustration. It was, it was really nice to just have a peaceful, you know, discussion this time. And it speaks very, very loudly to the work that she's done tirelessly. And I did comment on that, that don't forget to take a little time for yourself. But, but tirelessly she's worked for us and given us her all. And I am very, very happy to have made this motion and I'm really looking forward to the future with Dr. Youngberg.
Anybody else?
And you all know, I didn't say that before, so.
Is there anybody else?
Yeah, this is Gary. Yeah, I just want to say it's a really wonderful partnership, I, I think, between the board and the superintendent and, and central office. And I do appreciate the, you know, academic focus and the, you know, great knowledge that Dr. Youngberg brings to teaching and curriculum and also her own experience as a teacher and principal and now superintendent. So, you know, I think that's really important and I'm very happy that she will be continuing with us.
Jaime, do you want to say something?
Yeah, sure. I want to just echo what everybody else said. I think I've said it many occasions, you know, that that we're so glad that she came, she came. Congratulations. We, I really look forward to working with you and support you. And just move forward. Thank you. Congratulations again.
Brandon?
Dr. Youngberg, I just want to say, you know, thank you for all the work you've done. It's been amazing seeing how far you've been able to move this district in a very short amount of time and other, you know, renewing of your contract, we can really get the ship going in the right direction. So thank you.
Now, we really look forward to this as you can tell, it's a very unified board on, on this, on this subject and on many other subjects and goals right now. We look forward to working with you, Dr. Youngberg, over the summer to refine some of the goals. And we also, just so the public watching this understands, we agreed that we would get some feedback from the different stakeholders in the district over the fall once school started again, so that we can loop that into a mid-year conversation with Dr. Youngberg and use it to help inform the next evaluation along with the goals that we've set with Dr. Youngberg that we will use when we do our evaluation a year from now. And the board will also be doing a self-evaluation as soon as we can get that going, so that we're hoping to get back on track with a real solid annual throughout the year process for evaluation and goal setting. And that's the only way the board and the superintendent are going to be able to gauge what is and isn't working and figure out how we move forward. And we're very excited because Dr. Youngberg is itching to show us what her ideas are about how we can do some things differently moving forward rather than managing a crisis, which is what we've all been navigating through pretty much from the day you took on the task in November. That was the transition crisis and then we ended up with the COVID pandemic. So, um, I think what we'd like to do is take a vote now on the motion that's on the floor and then we'll turn it over to Dr. Youngberg to say a few words. So we'll take a roll call, please, Janet.
Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Dr. Galucci?
Aye.
Dr. Gomez?
Aye.
Ms. Haney?
Resounding aye.
Ms. Hyde?
Aye.
Ms. Lambert?
Can I think about it a little longer? Absolutely.
Mr. O'Neill?
Aye.
Ms. Rowe?
Definitely.
Thank you.
So it's, it's done now. Three years now to work, work with you and.
You're stuck with us.
Yeah.
That's a good thing.
We're going to hand it over to you, Dr. Youngberg. I'm sure you might want to say something.
Absolutely. First thing I want to say, thank you for all the kind words we all shared tonight. But I am definitely humbled by the board's confidence in my leadership and incredibly appreciative of my leadership team. appreciative of my leadership team. Everyone is supporting us through, like you said, 15 months of crisis, is technically what we've been dealing with. A special thank you has to go out to Janet Testa and Neil Weathers. The two of them, they keep me sane, Neil, every night. Neil and I say the same thing to each other. I'll come back tomorrow if you come back. That's what we've been saying for the last 15 months. We're going to continue that. In terms of the district, I am so excited about steering the ship or leading the way into our next chapter. I think there's some incredible things that we're about to accomplish together. We have an amazing set of administrators, teachers, paraprofessionals, and every one of our employees in the district, all those folks that support the non-instructional things that keep us going every day. If we can get the machine working together, true team effort, you're going to see some incredible things happening. I think we already showed you some of those incredible things dealing with the COVID crisis. They kicked it up. They've already showed us what happens when you, you know, back us against the wall and give us a real challenge. So I'm incredibly humbled and excited to be leading this next chapter in support of the students of the Wyndham Public Schools. So thank you very much. I know, I'm woo-hoo.
Well, that's great. So we have just one more item for business on the agenda, which is approval to move to a cloud-based, to Cloud Based Tyler Hosting Service. There was information in great detail in your packet about this. But before we start discussing, I know that Brendan would like to say something.
Yeah, I just wanted to state for the record that I'll be recusing myself of this conversation. And I'm standing from the vote as one of the two vendors involved in this is my current employer. So.
Thank you, Tyler. I mean, thank you, Brendan. So I would entertain a motion to approve the move to Cloud Based Tyler Hosting Service. So moved. Moved by Paula, seconded by Ilda. So is there discussion? People have any questions? Mark?
Yeah, just, I don't think I saw, how is this going to be in relationship to the town? Are we still going to be on the same platform? Is it still, does it affect them? Are they moving with us? Just tell me how it's working with the town's computers.
Neil, are you go ahead.
Sorry. Yes, they are approving, we are moving with them.
Are they, are they simultaneously voting on this at their level at their meeting?
I believe so. That's what Christian has told me, that it was going to go to their Board for approval.
So you're telling me we both have to approve it for this to go forward?
That I'm not 100% sure.
We know that we want it to
I would guess, I would guess so for moving with them.
Right. They're the ones that asked me to get the approval, get our Board approval.
Neil, were you going to say something?
I was just going to say, based on the meetings and all the feedback from Rita, that this will make our operations more efficient and be helpful to us based on just for a variety of factors. And actually, I don't want to speak for the town side, but it seemed that way based on when we were in the webinars with them. It seems like, it does seem like that's, you know, Rita and I, based on our information, recommend that this is a good idea.
Yeah, and I don't disagree with it. I was just more concerned, as always happens, six months down the line, the town's going to be late on their audit. They're going to blame us because we switched computer systems and we're not talking to them. And I just want to make sure that we're in communication. You're telling me we are. You're telling me they recommended it, and that's fine. I don't want to give them any more excuses for saying that we're holding up their process or we're doing something that's not
The actual contract gets signed by the town. So, yeah.
I thought it was interesting reading, and I'm not a tech person, but it was interesting to read about the access to the servers without third-party intervention and some of the things in the background of the eight points were of interest. I think Mark's point is well-taken, though, that we need to maybe communicate with the town that this should not be another reason why something doesn't get done on time. Tracy?
I'm just wondering, I know of another superintendent in another district where they had ransomware done. And does this have anything to do with it? Does it open us up more or less to something like that? And, you know, does it affect our protection from that? I know nobody is completely protected from it, especially in this day and age. But I want to make sure, I mean, school districts have been hit. I want to make sure we're not one of them because I think, don't think we will, because we don't have any money to pay the ransom, but, you know.
Does anybody know the answer to that question?
To be honest, that specific aspect wasn't a huge part of the conversation we had, right? Rita, would you say that's true?
Right. That is true.
Brendan, I know you're recusing yourself from the vote, but do you have any knowledge on this topic, aside from the fact that it's your company? You can say no. I don't want to put you on the spot for that.
So I can say that it is publicly out there that Tyler themselves got hit with ransomware back in September of this year, September 2020. So I would not say it has any bearing one way or the other, really.
Okay, thank you.
Do people feel comfortable taking a vote on this?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so then we'll call the question. And I mean, I'll ask Janet to take a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Dr. Gulci?
Aye.
Dr. Gomez?
Aye.
Ms. Himey?
Aye.
Ms. Hyde?
Aye.
Ms. Lambert?
Aye.
Ms. Ray?
Yes.
Extension, Mr. O'Neil. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. So with that, we've ended the action item. Is there anybody who would like to speak during public comment? Just unmute.
I would like to say something.
Okay, identify yourself for the record, please.
This is Pamela Kavanaugh. I just wanted to say that I think that I can speak on behalf of all the staff and teachers at Wyndham High School and of course, for Pat and Fatima and me, how excited we are to continue working with Tracy, who's definitely provided a direction to us. And I also wanted to thank especially Tracy and Mark and all of the people with Dollars for Scholars and our whole Wyndham community for their generosity in supporting our graduates on our scholarship night the other night. It was amazing, the support that our community has provided. So thank you.
Okay, and I guess I missed, Kami, you had your hand up. Go ahead.
Yeah, hi, I'm Kami Allen Poirier. I'm a teacher here in Wyndham. And I've been a teacher here for many decades and worked with a lot of superintendents as an instructor in Wyndham. And I just want to say congratulations to Dr. Youngberg. And it's just nice to work with someone that understands instructions so deeply and also understands how wonderful our kids here in Wyndham are. So I look forward to the next three years working with you.
Anybody else? Yes, Tracy, go ahead.
I just wanted to, sometimes when your children have graduated, you become a has-been and you don't put the effort into the schools or whatever that you have before. And I wanted to thank Ilda tonight because she has coordinated with Project Grad, the PT SO, and Mr. DeVivo, Mayor DeVivo, to make sure that the graduating seniors will have yard signs again, like what they did last year. And kind of once you've moved on, especially if you have an only child like Ilda does, you know, you're done with that portion of your life and you look forward to something else. And she's gone above and beyond, again, this year, like she did last year, and she got the yard signs. I dropped the check off today on behalf of Dollars, Project Grad, sorry. And she took care of that for us. So I wanted to thank her formally.
Oh, thank you. That's great.
Thank you. That's nice to be recognized. It's my pleasure. As I was telling Mia, you know, I joined the Board a few years ago because I love the Wyndham kids, not just my kid. So thank you.
It shows, it shows.
Thank you.
Is there, is there anybody else who would like to speak during public comment? Sorry, I didn't mean
I'm sorry. Can I, can I take this opportunity to ask for some more help to do the signs? Because we do need some help putting the stakes in the signs. There's like 136 and getting them on these yards by the weekend.
When and where is that happening? So in case people, or people can just get in touch with you if they're
Yes.
if they want to help. Okay, great. Thank you.
We'll work on getting you some help tomorrow, okay?
All right, thank you. Oh, there's a bunch of teachers from Wyndham High School that are helping, but the more the merrier, just so we can get it done. Thanks, everybody.
Thanks. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak during public comment? Hearing none?
We move.
We're moved to adjourn at 8:01 PM. And congratulations again, Dr. Youngberg.
Thank you very much. I'm so excited.
You have a great night. A great night tonight.
I know. Absolutely.
Celebrating your son, now you can celebrate yourself.
No, and I was one of those, like you get a little weepy. So this is like a good way to end.
Great. Well, good night, everybody.
Good night.
Good night.
Stay cool.
Good night.